I'd like to call the second meeting of the month of December. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett. Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafas.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Can anybody please rise? Trustee Stanton, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Aye, honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the hearing of public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Stanton.
You're welcome.
Move on to item number three. This is recognition of the audience. This is if someone has a question or concern for an item that is not on the agenda. Now would be the time to come forward. Go like once, twice, three times, and move on. Chair will accept the motion to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2019 meeting.
So moved.
I'll second. There's a motion to second. Any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Abstain.
Ayes have it. Motion carried. Notice the one abstention. Move on to consent agenda. Chair will accept the motion.
So moved. Her omnibus from A to L.
I'll second. There's a motion to second. The items on the consent agenda are A, approval of the agenda; B, approval of the schedule of bills for December 16th, 2019, in the amount of $10,443,594.43; C, request board approval of an ordinance granting a special use to 1400 Ganon Road LLC owner and Charles Vincent George Architects applicant, Lot 2 Hoffman Estates Retail Subdivision, 1400 Ganon Road, new address 1199 West Higgins Road; D, request board approval of an ordinance granting a special use to Umeeta Health Alexian Brothers Behavioral Health owner and Kim Lee Horn applicant, 1650 Moon Lake Boulevard; E, request board approval of a resolution establishing fees for police and fire department personnel hire back rates; F, request board approval of a resolution providing payment for appointed commissions and boards; G, request board approval of request by Hoffman Estates Park District for site plan approval for park enhancements and parking lot expansion at South Bridge Community Park, 1450 Freeman Road; H, request approval to enter into a franchise agreement between the Village of Hoffman Estates and Comcast of Illinois; Six, what is that? LLC Limited Liability Corporation and Comcast of Illinois, West Virginia LLC; I, request board approval of One, 2020 renewal of the village's property and casualty insurance program through the suburban liability insurance pool slip; and 2020 renewal of the village's workers' compensation, underground storage tank, and local liability coverages through Alliant and Mesiro Insurance Companies; J, request board authorization to purchase a Kubuta worksite vehicle with snow blower, salt spreader, broom, and blade attachment for the Circe Center Arena from Russo Power Equipment Schiller Park, Illinois, in and amount not to exceed $37,216; K, request board authorization to one-way formal bidding and two, purchase 32 new food and beverage point-of-sale POS units from NCR Duluth, Georgia, for the Circe Center Arena concessions in amount not to exceed $34,739.21; and L, request board authorization to procure two front-end loaders via lease to purchase option through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. We do have a motion to second. Anybody want anything pulled here? Seeing no. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. I'll go on to President's Report here. We've got some proclamations, I gather, Madam Clerk? We do. Who's got the first one?
I do. I should say I have the honor of the first one. Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance to assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the police department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; whereas the length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 35 years of dedication, proficiency, in the aforementioned department; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Thursday, January 2nd, 2020, as Ted Boss Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who might have assisted them.
Chair will accept the motion.
So moved.
I'll second. There's a motion to second. We appreciate the great job that Chief Boss has done for us, rising through the ranks until he's served the last past several years as chief, and he's always been a great police officer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Chief?
Congratulations, sir.
Nice job, Chief. Started when you were one.
Congratulations.
Let's get a picture, Chief.
Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the Development Services Department Engineering Division has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 30 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims Thursday, January 2nd, 2020, as Shelley Wulenga Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in its expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept the motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion to second. We appreciate the great job that Shelley's done for us for three decades. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Shelley?
Why don't we go down? Let's go down.
Go down because it's just too hard.
It'd be too. Can you read? Congratulations.
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 Reverse.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the police department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims Friday, January 3rd, 2020, as Michael Barber Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept the motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion to second. We appreciate the great job that Mike has done for us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Chief, you want to take this and give Mike our thanks?
The next one, I think, is here.
No, she's here.
I have the next one also. Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed towards the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the police department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaims Monday, December 23rd, 2019, as Catherine Colley Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urges all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept the motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion to second. We really do appreciate the great job that Chief Colley's also done for us. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Get a picture? All right. Just stay here, Chief. The other two, Chief Boss, Chief Fool is coming up. We'll get the three chiefs.
They're leaving you out, Fortunato.
Wrong department.
Wrong color shirt on.
Think we either need taller mayors and trustees or shorter police chiefs. Who's next?
I am. Okay. So Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the police department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Monday, December 23rd, 2019, as Scott Reichel Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept the motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion to second. Scott's done a really great job for us also. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carried. Chief? Might as well just stay up here, Chief. Okay.
Office of the Mayor proclamation: Whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed towards the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community; and whereas the police department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community; and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee; and whereas the Village of Hoffman Estates, on behalf of its citizens, desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department; be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Monday, December 23rd, 2019, as Matthew Typle Day in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept the motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion to second. We appreciate the great job Matt's done also. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Chief? Sure, I'll walk for you. Smart man. Good matter, thanks. Okay. I've got one appointment I'd like to make this evening. That's Myreen Iaso to the Platts Concert Commission.
So moved.
I'll second. Motion to second. Myreen served us with distinction on the Planning and Zoning Commission and was convinced by the co-chairs, I believe, to join the Platts Concert Commission. So we... Why don't you stand up, Myreen? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for serving. A lot of volunteers in this community. This past Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Economic Development Director Kevin Kramer and I were in New York City for the ICSC, the International Council Shopping Centers meeting in New York. And on Saturday, I participated in Shop With a Cop, wrapping presents. I was applying tape. They don't let me wrap, but I was helping out as best I could. And this evening, this afternoon, Kevin Kramer and I went to... Clinical Computer Systems are located on Greens Point Parkway as a business retention visit. They're very happy here. They recently moved from Elgin. They have a beautiful facility there, so we're quite pleased with that. I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy Kwanzaa and whatever, however you celebrate. Hope everybody has a great end of the year and a good New Year. Couple other things before we get to trustee comments. One, Corporation Counsel Patty Cross, I believe, is something that she might want to inform everybody about.
Today, the village received news that its motion to dismiss in a case involving School District 220, some prior residents of South Barrington and the Plum Farms Development out west, that complaint was dismissed and the court granted the village's motion to dismiss. The ruling was in effect that one governmental entity cannot prove its sustained hardship against another governmental entity. And so now, School District 220 would be left with either letting the decision go, filing a notice of appeal, or filing a motion for reconsideration by the Circuit Court of Cook County judge. That last one in particular is a very hard threshold to make. You have to prove the judge made an error in law or misunderstood or misapprehended the facts before it. We're very pleased with the decision by the Circuit Court of Cook County, and at this point, we're not anticipating that District 220 would spend the additional taxpayer funds to pursue the case further. The judge's decision was very explicit in its finding.
Nice job by our legal department. Thank you. Yes, Happy New Year. Also, Monica Savidra, who serves as the Director of Public Health and Human Services Department, is also the Chair of the Complete Count Committee for the Village of Hoffman Estates. I think Monica's got an announcement to make also.
All right. Good evening. So today, we became aware that we are recipient of a grant from the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus for $15,000 for our Complete Count Census Committee for our efforts to reach hard-to-count neighborhoods. This is the second grant we're recipient of because we also received a grant from Cook County for up to $25,000. So we are very excited. It is a lot of hard work that many people who are sitting behind me also worked on. So Suzanne Ostrowski and Jen Georgievic and Rachel Muthiella and her team, as well as Pete Gugliotta and his team, all helped to compile a lot of information about Hoffman Estates, worked through numbers with us, and we're really excited to be able to start doing some programming, larger-scale programming, to make sure everyone in Hoffman Estates gets counted in April.
A great job. Thank you. Appreciate the work you all do. I did neglect at the beginning to mean to state that the village board meetings are telecast live and will be rebroadcast during the week on our cable channel, just as all of our meetings are open meetings, board and committee meetings. So just wanted to get that in the record. Move on to trustee comments. Trustee Stanton.
Thank you. On the 5th of December, I was able to attend the groundbreaking ceremony for the extension to Umeeta Health Alexian Brothers Behavioral Health Hospital. And that evening, my wife and I were able to attend our volunteer appreciation dinner that was here. On the 7th of December, I was stopped in at the Sunderland Farm for the Teddy Bear Holiday Party, and I want to thank the Historical Sites Commission. Once again, they did a wonderful job. There were a ton of kids there, more than I've ever seen, I think, on any other year that I've gone. On the 12th of December, I attended the Dare Graduation with Clerk Romanoff at the Thomas Jefferson School. And also on the 12th, I stopped by the police station to help wrap presents and do some stocking stuffing for the Shop With a Cop. That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, I should say Merry Christmas to some and Happy Holidays to all.
Very good. Trustee Mills.
Thank you. I missed quite a few events because of a much-deserved vacation with my husband for a couple weeks, but I'm happy to be back in the swing of things here. On the 14th, this past Saturday, I participated in Shop With a Cop. I want to thank our Hoffman Estates Police Department and Fire Department, who were involved this year, too. And special thanks goes out to Karen Arnett, who's now with us tonight, for all the hard work she put in coordinating it. This year, I believe they had 80 children that the police department was able to help, and it was a great event. Later that morning, I attended with my family the Park District Express Breakfast with Santa over at Poplar Creek Country Club, and that was a great event for all. And they followed that up with a free Winter Fest out on the golf course area, and the kids all were having a ball out there, throwing snowballs at a fake snowman. Want to wish happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone, and thank all of our staff for another great year you've provided for our residents. Let's look forward to another year of success for the village.
Thank you, trustee Mills.
You're welcome.
Trustee Palafas.
I have a few things to repeat from some of you others. But for starters, great news on the judge's ruling on the Plum Farms litigation. Perhaps now we can collaborate without courts and lawyers involved. Also wanted to congratulate Shelley, who just left here, as well as Chief Colley and Chief Boss, for all of your years of dedication and service. I personally feel your contribution is what keeps Hoffman Estates growing to greatness and all of the great things our village has to offer. Thank you to Myreen for joining the Platts Concert Commission. We definitely need the help, given the growth of the event. And Gal has done an excellent job at recruiting. Congratulations on a successful Shop With a Cop. My sentiments, like trustee Mills, with Karen Arnett as well. And thank you to our staff for another great and profitable year. Looking forward to 2020. And as others have said, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Trustee Newell.
Okay. Going back to like the 3rd, did the Cub Scout tour at Station 22, which was really a lot of fun. And we did learn some stuff with the mayor and trustee Arnett. It was really interesting. And on the 5th, we had the volunteer appreciation dinner at the village, which was really done well. And a lot of these programs can't be done without our volunteers. So thank you to all of you, one and all. On the 7th, the Teddy Bear Tea, as trustee Stanton had mentioned, I think it was really the largest that we've seen there. A lot of kids were having a really good time, and Santa was great, as usual. On the 10th, attended the Schaumburg Township Holiday Sounds, which was really nice. A lot of our seniors attended it and got to sing and swing some of the holiday cheer. On the 10th, we did the wrapping for the Shop With a Cop and stuffed stockings and stuff. On the 14th, the Shop With a Cop, thank you to everyone, the police, fire, anyone who volunteered for it, to Karen Arnett, who organized it. And just to see some of the faces of the kids was just amazing. And of course, the mayor, he can't do anything other than tape. He's not allowed.
Thank you for pointing that out.
But you're a good taper. We all had our jobs, you know? We had the packers, the wrappers.
Yesterday at home.
Yeah. So, good practice. So. And then later, what is it? The mayor and Clerk Bev Romanoff, we attended the wake for Steve Hellstrom, so we send our condolences to their family. And then, last but not least, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Festivus, whatever you celebrate. Have a safe holiday. It goes out to staff for all the hard work, for our residents who are near to our hearts and to the board that, hey, Happy New Year, everybody. And be safe and enjoy. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Gata.
Here we go. There's not too many things, though, left, really. Anyways, then on Tuesday, December 3rd, attended Gigi's Given Open House for hugs and mugs. That is at their headquarters on Higgins. With the mayor and I, we were there. Then on Saturday, December 7th, the craft event here at the Village Hall. Do you know what? It was really fun to see the kids making snowflakes and painting them all different colors, and everybody was having a good time. And do you know what? Dr. Savidra, because you're the chairman of that, right? Congratulations to you and your staff, all right, for putting on an excellent program. Then from there, we went to Teddy Bear Holiday Party, put out at the Historical Society Commission. And I don't know the name of that gal, but she reads from the book every year, and she is absolutely excellent. She had all of those kids. There must have been about 30 or 40 of them. She had them in the palm of her hand when she was reading the book. And by the way, the book was Three Little Bears, okay? And let's say, Tuesday, the 10th, attended the Senior Citizens Commission meeting. And boy, did they have a program set up for the year 2020, and I think that's really going to be excellent for the seniors. And the last thing on here was Saturday, December 10th, Shop With a Cop. There is no question about that. And it was very interesting to see that the police department and the fire department, right, were out, you know, with all the kids. And do you know how special that is? They said that there was 82 kids, right, that came through for it. And just like trustee Newell said, just the look on their face and the excitement. Yes, thank you for putting all of that on. And also Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to whatever that you celebrate. Thank you, staff, right, for all you do for us, for the village, and you keep us all safe, which is excellent. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Move on to Village Manager's Report.
Just like to echo, Happy Holidays to everyone. Please have a safe and healthy holiday and New Year, and we'll see you in January.
Okay. Dee, Village Clerk's Report.
First, during the month of November, 40 passports... I know you guys were hoping I would have forgotten again. Forty passports and 143 FOIA's were processed. But we did find another thing that the mayor is good at tonight.
Oh.
Bowls. He can do the stick-on bows. As long as his nails are long enough to do the little peely thing off on the back of it. So he's got, you know, it's that gluey kind of thing.
They're entitled. They're entitled.
Anything that sticks, call the mayor. Somebody needs a toupee, call the mayor.
You're the closest one, Jim. You're just a sitting duck.
I don't see Pat Seeger either, so.
He's right there. He's right there.
Here she goes again.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and she did a good job of bossing the rest of us at our wrapping of our target.
Had to have a leader, you know, so she was our leader.
Move on to 6E Treasurers' Report. Does anybody have any questions on the Treasurers' Report? That'll be received and filed. Move on to item number seven, Planning and Zoning Commission. Sheriff Person Combs, how are you? Yes, Happy Holidays.
Standing in Zoning Commission?
Mic, my phone?
We're not on. We're not on?
No.
That has to be turned on, that one.
Okay.
You're on.
Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended for approval, a request by DeChau BSM LLC, owner and Winston Knolls Foundation applicant, for a special use amendment under Section 9-8-2-C-9 of the zoning code and a site plan amendment to permit an outdoor playground for special needs children on the property located adjacent to 2353 Hassel Road with 11 conditions. The vote was nine a's, two absent.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
A second. There's a motion, a second. Any questions on this item? Trustee Mills.
Was there any discussion on how they're gonna, if they're gonna level off the land? Because it does drop down there pretty badly.
Not the land specifically. It had to do more with the access we were discussing and how it's limited by the topography.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? The head of the school is here. Do you want to say anything, Phil? You don't have to. I just. No, you have to speak at the microphone, yeah. Name an address for the record. Thank you.
Answer your question, Karen. Yes, we're going to level it off with a retention wall, fill it in so it levels up, because right now the land slopes down, so it'll be leveled up.
Right, that was my concern there, too.
It'll be all finished.
So it's going to be level land?
Level with the, yeah, with the sidewalk.
Are you going to have a, you'll have a retaining wall at the end of it?
Yes, retaining wall on three sides.
Okay, was it included in the plans?
Yes, it should have been.
Okay.
You need to identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, we just need your name.
We're on TV. You name an address.
Oh, my name is Val Belmonte. I am at 24264 North Grandview Drive in Lake Barrington, but I am the president of the Winston Knolls School, the Winston Knolls Foundation at 2353 Hassel Road.
Okay. Trustee Newell.
I just have one question. The retention pond, has that ever flooded at all at any time to a point that?
Sorry, that information I don't have, but the information, we have to be above the 100-year flood plain, and we are, we have done that. We met that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Any other questions?
I did have one.
Yes, go ahead, trustee Stanton.
If the playground were not to be put in, would the school still be there, or would the school want to move if the playground is not put in?
Our plan is to, is to stay, but the plan for the playground significantly is for the children are profound in severe autism, and part of their activity with skill development, life skill development is inside and interaction with kids, and the playground really isn't a playground. What we, what we look at as it, it's more of a sensory playground because it's going to be an extension of their therapy, their speech therapy, their interaction therapy and so on, so it'll be a programmed, program activities there for the children.
Now, is this going, Pete, is this a porous area?
Not the playground surface itself, no.
Where's the water going to run?
It would have proper drainage. It ultimately drains into the pond.
Okay.
So it's set up to drain properly.
They have drains at the playground, in the playground itself? Because we're hearing now that the pitch is not going downhill anymore. It's going to be?
Yes, the, it'll be engineered, right now it's engineered to have drainage moving out towards the retention pond. The surface of the playground will be porous, so it'll drain down. It'll also be rubber, it's kind of a rubberized material, safe rubberized material.
It's controlled, it's controlled in a, in a way. It's not, not completely through to the ground, so it'll be, it'll seep through the surface and be collected and routed into the pond.
So technically, it shouldn't pool.
Correct, correct.
Correct.
All right, that's it.
Any other questions? See any other questions? Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
I was going to say no, but I'll say aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
No.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Move on to eight, Additional Business. Eight A, request board approval of an ordinance amending Sections 9-1-2, 9-2-1, and 9-3-13 and creating Article 9-11 Cannabis Dispensary Overlay District of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code Cannabis Dispensaries. Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Do you have any questions on this? Are there any questions on this item? Seeing none, let's call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Stanton.
Nay.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
No.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. Move on to nine, request board approval of the 2020 Village Board and Standing Committee meeting schedules. There's a proposed amendment?
Yes, sir. Trustee Mills at the last meeting asked the question about whether or not too much time would last between the August 17th scheduled board meeting and the first board meeting in September, given the summer schedule, and at that time, we thought it might be okay. The next day, the day after Tuesday, we looked at it with finance and decided that over, because there's five Mondays in that August, that it'd be a full month basically between meetings, and so we request that the meeting originally scheduled for September 14th be moved to Tuesday, September 8th.
Should probably learn to listen to trustee Mills.
I agree.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The only problem is trustee Mills and probably trustee Arnett will not be able to attend that meeting.
Right.
So.
There's a motion, that's what the amended meeting is. Yes, sir. Right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion, a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
No.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried.